I see we have more legal fees on Boulder Falls property owners. Another sixteen hundred. That's for the lawsuit filed against the city.
And also part of Carol Boers, they always pretty big response is also some of us regarding Boulder Falls also. Any other questions, discussion on the current claims? Got a motion, a second approval, if I could say aye.
Aye.
Posed, no? And only Kim, just ahead of the claims, there's a correction to a claim that had been paid in the past?
It was questioned at last meeting when swimming suit bill was so high and one of those invoices for five thousand plus was already had been paid and wasn't taught until after the meeting but before we submitted the checks.
Okay.
So it needs to be a formal correction because it was part of the meeting minutes last time in the first place.
I got it. So that's, that's why it's on the gin, it's a little period of reason. Okay. Communication from the public, Beth?
I'm gonna ask a break. I have the documents to hand out, it's a two point and passing that. My name's Beth Spitzer and I'm Executive Director of Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. And I also have with me today Fred Folsom who's from Keeper Sanitation. I'm going to start with my part of the presentation and then I'm gonna turn over to Fred and then I will be concluding. And the reason why I'm here is a part of the budget request process and I want to apologize to the council for not being here last week. I was surprised to find out that I had been requesting to come because in last year we submitted our request in writing and you never did come and present face to face so I didn't think that was gonna happen this year so, especially since we had not asked for an increase in funding, so I was a bit surprised when I heard that there were some questions and concerns about our request. So that's why I'm here today and I, and also wanted to explain that I couldn't be here last week because I, I worked for the VA, I was having to commute between Hot Springs and Fort Need last week which meant getting up at six, leaving at six AM and getting home at six at night, so last week wasn't a very good week for me to come to a meeting, so I apologize for that, I hope you understand that. So what I have on the sheet there is our three focused areas of Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. We focus on litter prevention, waste reduction and recycling and beautification and community greening. And some of the projects that Keep Hot Springs Beautiful does is, one of the things we're very well known for is the Great American Cleanup that happens each May. And we try to get as many volunteers from the community involved with that from youth on up. And part of that is our river adoption program where we have split up the river into six different sections and we make sure that those are adopted by various groups and they clean up. At that time and we encourage them to go in there more than that. We also have the pod squad. Again, we have the downtown street corner pods and we make sure that those are adopted out and those, we're talking about the flowers and the shrubs and things like that on the street corners, so the pod squad's very busy with that all spring through the fall. And right now actually coming out in the paper tomorrow will be the People's Choice Award that we do to recognize the pod squad that people feel is the top pod for the year and this month during September is when the townspeople get to vote for that. And so I encourage you to do that and then we give them a large stone plaque that goes in the pod to recognize them for their hard work during the season. We also do litter reduction for the Great American Cleanup and other days throughout the year, we send groups to various locations in the community to clean them up. For instance along the viaduct, along the steps from the fire station to upper town and the one by the Episcopal Church, also the parks, we also clean up litter there. This year we did the Paint South Dakota Project. We were awarded a grant and we were able to paint a house of a homeowner that was in need, so that was a big project, a lot of volunteer hours. We also were awarded a grant and we did the Earth Box Giveaway Program this year. And some of those earth boxes went to business owners so that they could plant flowers in front of their businesses to make them more attractive. We also gave earth boxes to low-income people so that they could plant vegetables and raise their own produce and also be able to eat more healthy and that's been extremely successful. Just this, in the last couple of weeks here, I've asked for a follow-up from the people who've got the earth boxes and we've had just wonderful response, the, they've sent pictures and they're just so thankful for the earth boxes and it's been wonderful for them to be able to have the produce and, and things like that and that's a part of the community greening, part of Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. We also do electronics recycling and we're gonna be doing that in October, so you'll be hearing more about that. People will not only be able to bring electronics but also appliances and things like that, so that's a big help to cleaning up the community. We also provide a curriculum to the Boys and Girls Club which helps them to learn about environmental issues, cleaning up, littering, recycling, all those different things and that's also been very well received by, by the schoolchildren. And then of course we have the recycling program and I'm, we're gonna be talking about that a lot more, that's one of our, of course, a very big thing that we provide for the community. I'm not gonna talk a lot about it right now because Fred will be addressing that in just a moment. Another thing that I put on this sheet is grants that we have applied for but not received because I want you to know that there are a lot of hours and hours of work that go in that sometimes we don't get the, the award. I mean, these are all competitive grants and so we don't always succeed in getting them. And these grants all would have been wonderful assets for our community and these are things that I can certainly apply for again in the future. One of them was to get new Welcome to Hot Springs signs at the entrances to Hot Springs and that would be a wonderful asset. Communities like Custer and Edgemont have some wonderful significant, nice signage into their communities and we need that during Hot Springs, but we did not get that grant. We also submitted a grant for a Lenda bin recycling program and what that would be is we would have bins and then when different events happened in the community such as downtown at the Arts in the Park or at Christmas in the Hills, those groups could contact us and they could get recycling bins from us and then they could set them up at those different events to collect recyclables. So that was another grant that we applied for but didn't get at this time. And then I also applied for a grant to get recycling containers for our parks and I worked with our city department on that grant, they were fully in support of that grant, but unfortunately we weren't selected this year, so I hope in the future that we'll be able to get that done. So right now, we do wanna go back to the recycling question because I understand that there's been some questions from the council because recently we did send out letters to business owners explaining that they could not use the recycling at ShopCo. So I'm going to let Fred address the reasons for that. And I also understand that there's been some rumors that the recycling is not really going to Rapid City to recycle and so I wanted again Fred to be able to address that question himself, so I'll turn it over to Fred for it right now.
Okay. Well, Mayor, City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight. We've been excited for the last three years to be a part of the community. The last two and a half years, we've been partnered with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful and it's been a fun, a fun program to be a part of. The city really should be commended for their support for Keep Hot Springs Beautiful because Beth has entertained, has been an advocate for advancing the cause of recycling and beautification and everything, very passionate about the cause and we've been very fortunate to partner with it, it's been a pleasure. That being said, you know, the program is subsidized substantially by Keeper Sanitation. The misnomer that recycling self-funds itself is just that, a misnomer. Along with misnomers, all the recycling that is collected at the ShopCo location is recycled. We have had to change the methodology there with the changing of containers, we noticed that the color changed. There's several obstacles that Keep Hot Springs Beautiful had to face over this last year to try to keep the program in place. Obstacles that I've worked with them on to try to keep the program in place from a feasibility standpoint. And some of the changes that's, that's been implemented was the different containers. That way I can have an empty truck pick it up in the city of Rapid City or Badger State Recovery, both of those two entities, and Rapid City receives the material and it's recycled. We had to make a decision because of the success of the program that commercial businesses were using an exorbitant amount of the space that was there. The scope of the program was to benefit the residents of Hot Springs. So residents would come there, there wouldn't be any space, they'd set their bags alongside the containers, it was creating a mess, it was blowing into the ravine, nobody was happy with the program. And we really had to have, you know, again, this thing is subsidized every month by Keeper Sanitation. And we really had to have a, a serious discussion on its viability, you know, some of the, the changes that I suggested that were implemented is that, listen, you know, commercial businesses, they, they have recycling outlets. It makes no sense for me to incur the costs that I'm occurring and incur more costs for somebody to benefit from that that isn't even my customer on the trash side of it. Okay? I'm lowering their cost from the trash site because they can recycle and I'm incurring more costs on my side to provide this free service. And from a business standpoint, I made an investment two and a half years ago when we sat down and had a conceptual meeting, said, listen guys, I'm gonna lose money, I think Mayor Don was there. I said, I'm gonna lose money doing this, but I believe in what you're trying to do. And I've lost money every month, I continually lose money, but I don't consider it as, as losing money, it's an investment into a community that we're a part of. So with that being said, you know, I believe in Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, I think it's a worthy cause, it's a way for us to give back to the community, but you know, the, the misnomers of recycling, it does not pay for itself, the commodities that are collected there doesn't even come close to operating a truck and a man and transporting it to Rapid City and it recycles it.
If you were to set up a baleer in a location and actually accept more cardboard, still won't work for you?
There's not enough volume to justify baleers, not even, and then the manpower of trying to handle the bale, you know, that's just not a feasible option.
Do you buy ShopCo bales at this point?
I do not. Do not.
Problem I have with it is the, the businesses are taxpayers, and you're asking for tax money.
I'm not asking for tax money.
No, I'm, I'm talking to Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. I think that's a great program they do, but you know, I'm, I'm saying they're taxpayers too and you're asking for tax money. They're not the only ones, so is citizens, but they are taxpayers.
Again, the scope of the program.
I know.
And, and the reality is, the program's not sustainable with commercial volume being delivered, it's just not. It's a lot easier for me to write, a lot more cost-effective for me to write them a five thousand dollar check and come down here and present it to them, say we're supporting the community, that's a lot cheaper option for me.
I think it would make a big difference if Keeper had the business district or calling trash as well as the residents. And since they don't, I don't see any reason that they should be, be responsible for the business districts recycling.
You don't do any business, just residential in Hot Springs?
No, we have some business customers that do contract with us separately for recycling. You do?
I will go ahead and conclude and if you have any other questions at the end, you're certainly welcome to ask, but I don't want to take up too much of your time, I know you have many other things on your agenda. Just in conclusion, I do want to say that we as Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, we are an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful and because we are an affiliate of a national organization, we are required to submit an annual report and our recording here is from July 1st to June 30th, so I recently had to turn in that annual report and when I did that, it's very detailed, we have to explain all the different things that we've done throughout the year, account for all the volunteer hours, you know, count how many plants we planted in the pods, I mean, it's just very detailed. And when we submitted that report, the volunteer hours, I do want to say this too, from KAV, what they give for volunteer hours is twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents per hour and including that plus the physical things like the plants, the garbage bays, the recycling bins, the paint, all the things that we have given to the community, that has come up to a value of seventy-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-eight cents. So I do feel that our efforts are extremely beneficial to the city of Hot Springs, we present a cleaner and more beautiful hot springs and we do this in the hope that people will stay here, not only as visitors but to live here and we believe that we help the city of Hot Springs to thrive. And so we do hope that you will consider our request for funding. And as I said, if you do have any other further questions, I'd be happy to answer them or Fred if you have a question for Fred.
Okay. Thanks very much. We'll get to the preparation, we'll involve the fifteen or twenty minutes, we'll make a decision. Any other communication from the public?
Mayor, council, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Kim Moyar. And I'm here on two quick issues, John. I want to ask the council, I'm gearing up one for the carnival festival, but the question that I have for you guys is the New Year's Eve family dash, I will be doing that again this year and I'm requesting from the city council if we can do fireworks again, the city would be kind enough to provide those for family entertainment. It wasn't hit last year, I don't know how many of you did make it out, but we did keep quite a few families here in the community. So my request is for the fireworks. The other thing is I've been working about the last two months right after the mud run, again, thinking of what events we could bring into the community of Hot Springs, family entertainment, I told the carrie briefly on this a couple of months ago. It's about bringing the carnival back here. I've been, again, about the last two months, I did find, we've only got five companies that do supply carnival rides for the state of South Dakota. I did lock in one company that will come down here next year, July 25th, 26th and 27th. And again, I don't have the funds to do this, but they are requiring fifteen thousand dollars. With that comes with a thousand tickets to sell, we're selling that fifteen dollars a ticket, make our money back and then some. But all they're requiring from us is fifteen thousand dollars and that's for a three-day event. The rides would be anywhere from eight to ten rides, four to six being kitty rides and the others and the dogs and plus your regular. But I just feel it would benefit our community to bring that in and again, I'm just requesting lots of money, but it gets one that we could make back, I'm sure of.
Do you have dates on the carnival?
Yes, July 25th, 26th and 27th. And that actually is, most of the carnivals require fifty thousand dollars, but this guy does the small communities and stuff like that, know that most communities can't afford that, so he just needs enough to pay for, you know, the crew to get down here and supply the three days.
Is that a Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes, July 25th, 26th and 27th. And that is the only date available for the entire year. You have to find a year in advance.
Those tickets, those tickets even brought up, those thousand tickets, does that cover like all day rides for the, for the movie?
They, they are day passes, similar to one up in Rapid, Central States Fair, yeah. But, and what he had recommended is, you know, with that fifteen thousand dollars, we can sell those tickets for twenty dollars on up. But you know, if we did fifteen tickets of, you know, sell the sales and make our money back and then some, you know, if we sell more tickets, it's more money for the community. They make their extra money with all the extra entertainment and, you know, the silly games and, you know, the stuff for the kids with the teddy bears and stuff like that. I have been to a carnival a long time, but I remember when they did have it down here and I went to it when I was a kid, it was awesome. I just think we need to bring that back. So I've been working on that, I've got connections and stuff like that and I, I don't know if we can, if the city's got the money where we can put that up and secure that. I do have to get back to him with a date. He's holding that date, ten of the date for me, I told him I'm meeting with you guys this week, he would like an answer, probably no later than next week, I know it's a rush, rush, but I mean, he just got back to me after working with him for about two months.
Do you know what their normal working day is?
It's Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
No, I mean, their hours per, per day that they're running.
You know, he did say that they're willing to come in and set up the day before so the guys can, you know, rest and it's just kind of a little more excitement to rouse the community and, but no, I mean, he was just gracious of, you know.
So they don't look, work like a nine to five here?
No, he never mentioned anything like that. I am waiting for the contract to come to me in the mail, I told him to just mail it to me contingent upon if I can get the money back, you know, whether it's the city, city or pit board or somebody, because I just don't have the money to secure an event like that.
You know where you want to set it up yet, Centennial or Butler?
I think downtown Centennial where they used to set it up would be a great location. It's, you know, a medium focal point, draws people from all over.
Wouldn't that be the weekend wall would be here for get it?
No. The wall, and I, I'm just speaking because I'm on that committee, they will not bring that wall in, their regular working schedule for the wall to set up is a one day through Sunday. So at this time they-
Week after?
Pardon?
If we get it, it'd be the week after the carnival?
It would be the, that Wednesday, which is what, July 30th or 31st? And I know Don was, I know Don was still trying to work to see if they would get it a few extra days, but I did see the email and the email clearly stated it as one day through Sunday.
Okay. We cannot give you an answer tonight because it was not on our agenda, we cannot make a decision as a city council?
Correct.
If anybody has feelings over that, let me know either now or after the meeting or within a day or two.
It's fireworks, though, we've got fireworks for them, ain't we?
We've got fireworks for this.
I thought we invited it. For that.
Thank you.
I'd like to see that carnival come back, it's been a long time.
Good idea.
They just bring, the way I understand, they bring their own little, you know, they sell their cotton candy and stuff like that. But honestly, on the food part, I haven't died into that yet, I mean, just because I haven't seen the contract and I, I will not commit something until I, I mean, I, I just can't put my butt on the line for that kind of money.
Do I understand that it's a fifteen thousand guarantee, so we would have to guarantee the fifteen thousand, but if you sold two tickets, ten tickets at ten dollars each, then we would end up paying fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars?
If you only sold two tickets, correct? Yes.
Just want to make sure on this one.
The reason why they do that with a thousand tickets is so that they're working with the community, the community works back with them, so you guys promote it, you know. It's a great way for us to bring in some more, you know, extra money, I mean, we can draw from Edgemont and these, these other communities.
Good idea.
John would probably pledge five thousand.
I believe.
He said two thousand. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kim. Any other communication from the public?
Yes? My name is Mary Guley and I want to speak at Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. I spent most of my adult life in Minneapolis and we had a great recycling program. I didn't realize how spoiled I was until I came here. We had the boxes right near our back door, blue for paper, you know, red for this, all we had to do was put it in and we picked it up. When I came out here, I'm married to an environmental nut, and we stored our garbage, our recycling for a month and went to Rapid City once a month to recycle. It was a lot of work and I hated that bad room fill as toward the end of the month, paper, you know, everything, we recycled everything. I was so grateful when we started the recycling program here. So I wanted to speak for it and to say whatever the city can do to help it, it, it helps all of us that care about the environment, but it also does make the town better. And so I wanted to say that I, any money you can get to support that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Any other communications from the public?
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys know, I always said you guys budget meetings the whole time you guys were having it. I would just make a request for the city like as residents that you guys could put that in our local newspapers so we know exactly what the city is spending, I mean, with their enterprise fund, like put plenty down, how much is making, put the golf courts down so we know how much is taken and put the Mueller Center down so we know how much that is taken. I just think that's something that the city has, as a public, we have the right to know how you guys are spending our, our tax dollars and if you, and I don't know if you guys know about the Freedom of Information Act that the, that we ever passed years ago, but I think we have the right to know as a public what you guys are, how we're spending our money. I think the only way to do that would be to put that in our local newspapers.
Okay. Thanks. Any other communications from the public?
Yeah.
I just want to let the council know, there's, there's a group of us concerned parents about this bicycle ordinance that passed there. We're gonna see if we can go down to the public safety meeting, I believe it's next Tuesday, and speak with them and see if maybe we can get some changes made to that ordinance. You know, if we have to get signatures, then we'll go that, that way, but we have a few different ideas we'd like to run past there and see if we can't get something changed on this, on this deal. We can get nine o'clock, Mark.
On Monday, Monday.
Oh, it's not, it's Monday? Monday?
Public safeties are on Monday.
Monday, Mark. I thought it was Tuesday, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Are you trying to get rid of them so you-
No! Monday for you, Tuesday for you.
Any other communications from the public this evening? I'll continue, the first ordinance, a public hearing a little bit later, it's a little bit seven fifteen, it's on the rezoning of some property. If there's anybody that wishes to be heard on that ordinance about the rezoning of the property up north on 30 to 5, this is a public hearing, I entertain anybody to speak, ask questions, whatever, if they have a question about that specific ordinance.
That's just making it mixed use, right?
Yes. Okay, instead of voting on the ordinance like normal, I'm gonna continue this a little bit later since we missed putting the time on the agenda, I apologize for that, we'll come back to that later in the meeting, open up the hearing again in case there's somebody that shows up that wants to be heard, wouldn't be fair to ignore their wishes if there's somebody that wants to be heard. Next ordinance is 1136, it's a rezoning within the Turner and Cuffalo Conventions, it's a piece of property right down here south of the Mueller Center between here and Pro Build. This is the first reading, I entertain a motion to adopt the first reading and, and continue.
Sound move.
Motion to adopt the first reading, since it's an ordinance. Do we have to have a hearing on this one since it's a rezoning to Marley?
Your practice has been any second reading on an ordinance has been considered a hearing.
Okay, we don't have to have a formal hearing?
Not, not a formal notice, okay.
All right.
Will this encompass our property back here too?
Will this encompass our property back here too? It's a map. We just got hammered. Yeah. It will. It's everything in this side of the river, including the Mueller Center, it goes down as far as to the Proville, I believe. Not a hundred percent positive, I'm pretty sure from looking at the map. Have a motion in a second to turn the first reading. Any discussion or questions? Call it all, please.
Ashley?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Teshar?
Yes.
Winia?
Yes.
Get down, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next ordinance is eleven thirty-seven is the appropriation ordinance for this next year for the city. And what the council has done after several long evenings is we're keeping the tax request exactly the same as it was last year. A million, one million, five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, same as it was last year. And it's actually a little bit less than in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Those two years were not quite one million, thirty-seven thousand. So it's about thirty-two, about twenty-two thousand, less than it was three or four years ago. Anyway, since the first reading of appropriations ordinance and the tax, might be would be the same, million of five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Also the question about Keep House Friends Beautiful, do we want to include the five, the three thousand dollars they have requested in our budget request for this next year?
Make a motion, we do.
Have a motion in a second to include the three thousand. Keep House Friends Beautiful and the appropriation ordinance. Discussion or questions? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Al, the appropriation ordinance eleven thirty-seven, you'll have a motion to adopt the first reading.
Second.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Call roll, please.
Okay, just a clarification. It differs slightly from last year. We've created an enterprise fund, one for the Evans Plunt, which was not in last year's appropriation ordinance. And we've also taken the golf course out of the general fund and created an enterprise fund for two thousand and fourteen of the golf course. So there are two new enterprise funds in this appropriation ordinance that were not there last year.
Thank you, Paul. Any other discussion or questions? Doc, call roll, please.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Teshar?
Yes.
Winia?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes, and I'm glad to see that the council isn't raising taxes on the public again.
Okay, continuing resolutions. First resolution is property transfer from the rural to suburban districts. There are several pieces of property out in the backside in Golden Falls subdivisions that have been sold over the past couple, three years. We waited for that lawsuit. It was out there to be done. It is done. So we've gone through everything. This is the time to catch it up. That's what this resolution does. I entertain a motion to adopt.
Call roll.
Motion in a second. Discussion or questions? Have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. I also want the last, one of the budget meetings, we talked a little bit about the American Legion and I drafted a resolution of support for our local American Legion Post seventy-one. And if you'd like to delay it tonight, ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion or questions? Have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. And to personnel, we've got one change. We talked about it a lot of the time. We want to change the uncertified police officers starting wage, twelve, twelve dollars and forty cents, two fifteen dollars and forty cents. I would take a motion from the council. So I entertain a motion now.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion or questions? Have a motion in a second to start the uncertified police officers at thirteen forty. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. And also, we need a motion to approve the hiring of Matthew Tramp, full-time police officer. He would be starting at the uncertified wage, starting probably within ten days or two weeks if this is approved.
So is he, he hasn't been to the program here, then?
No, he's not. Worked for Parks.
Worked what?
Parks.
Old Town Park?
Somewhere. Been through that program with non-certified officers?
Been through the federal one?
Yeah.
We ever tried to get anybody that's certified from the get-go?
Yeah, we, we advertised for certified, for non-certified, but we don't have certified applications. Have a motion in a second to approve the hiring of Matthew Tramp. More discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. And the other personnel items, you can see on your agenda.
If some of this is related to resolution, this is important, we need a post seventy-one.
Yes.
I'm unaware of who the people who brought this, who brought this, what about? I'm the president of the Board of Representatives. He's vice president of the Board of Representatives. And I was not aware of this resolution at all. And who, who put in this resolution?
I did.
Okay.
I wrote it to the council, wanted to show some support for a local. So I put, I put this resolution based on what I knew and what I could see happening.
So we're all for you.
And we just-
I just didn't have the paper, this resolution, that was now.
We, we wanted to get behind you.
Yes, I know.
We want town to get money.
Yeah, yeah, we, we want everybody behind us, right? We're all, yeah, really. I was just unaware of this resolution, but it's that. Okay, that's all.
Uh, new business.
It's my understanding that the longevity stuff stays the way it is now as it evolves.
Is that correct? I don't, I don't know because we're going to leave the schedule we're on. We're going to go onto a spreadsheet and we're going to add a flat, pay for wages. So I don't know exactly what we're going to do. We're going to have to put something together that's, and then the motion committee can give it to the council and see how it's going.
I was hoping to make a correction after the discussion, so it was going to stay as it is.
Now, the longevity part?
Right.
Well, we'll stick to what we're here to talk about.
Yeah, is that, that's basically what he's asking. Am I right?
No, I was actually thinking that it was going to stay as it is now, continually going through next year.
Okay, new business. Alder County accepted a little bit from Nelson's Oil for number two Diet Diesel at three twenty and three quarters cents per gallon. Three dollars and twenty-three quarters cents. Got a travel request for Harley and for Scott to go to the South Coast Municipal League Conference October the eighth to the ninth. I entertain a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion or questions? Have a motion in a second to approve travel request. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. And the clean agreement, we can't decide on the agreement tonight. We have to have a hearing first. If there's anything that you don't like, that's any agreement you'd like to see changed, get hold of me. I've given them about probably five or six changes that I asked for already. We'll be getting a different final copy. If there's anything else, let me know. But we do need to set a motion, so we need a motion to set a hearing October seventh at seven fifteen to consider resolution of intent to lease property. It's one of the steps we have to do as a municipality in order to lease any property.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to set the hearing date. Discussion or questions? Have a motion in a second. All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Remember, if you've got anything you want changed, to get, get hold of me. I've been doing most of the work on this with Pete Lee as far as the contract. Can you repeat that dates before you- October the seventh, seven fifteen. And the golf course maintenance, building the heating, we talked about that a little bit in the last meeting. It wasn't a proposal or it was not a bid, so we won't do a change order. But it was not built according to the specifications we drawn up by Tracy. If the council wants to accept the building with the heating the way it is now, without the outside air coming in, I'd like to have a motion of the council to accept the heating system as installed. Is that what you're understanding by spending a little bit, extremely fixed, the way we want it? All I know is that-
It is the way we want it.
Everything's done. We just got, okay, that's what I want.
You've changed that.
Harley had wanted outside air to come into it and-
Tracy. Tracy wanted-
Harley. Tracy. Tracy wanted-
I'll take Tracy for most things. But it was not done to specifications that Tracy wanted, even though it was over and above what the manufacturer recommended. Tracy felt from a safety standpoint that we should have outside air with the painting and fuel that's inside that building.
Why doesn't he have all of our buildings have that, because all of our buildings have that heat? Why don't we add that to all the rest of our buildings, Harley? Did you ask him that?
I did not.
I would, because all of our buildings have the same heat.
Maybe we should. Seems to me like it might be.
Waste of money.
Anyway, right now we have a building that was not completed to the specifications. If the council wants to accept it that way, I need a motion. And if I don't get a motion, we're going to ask Tracy to get it, we're going to inspect.
I was under the understanding that there was going to be a change order and it was, it was finished tonight. Well, so what happened with that, Earl?
It's not, we, we didn't have a, a formal bid process, so formal change order is not needed. So by doing an acceptance, you're doing the same thing by, by accepting the building as is without the-
You guys are playing games. I'm tired of it.
This final acceptance is not a change order because it wasn't done like a bid project.
If you don't have a bidded project and you don't need it, why do we have to have a change order? That's what it's saying.
What I'm told is that by doing the final acceptance with a motion of the council, you would do the same thing as a change order would have done. There's no dollars exchanged one way or the other, but this does the same as a change order.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second to accept the golf course building with the heating as installed. Discussion or questions? Have a motion in a second to approve the heating system?
I'm a little confused, Tom. We are going to have it fixed after this or we're going to keep it as is?
Right now, we're going to accept the building as is. My personal feeling, I don't get to vote on it, but my personal feeling, if he's doing any spray painting of equipment or whatever, if he does some of that, I would think we would want to have outside air coming into the, always coming into that burn.
Did you see that really big band on the side of the wall? What do you call that? That's a lot of fresh air. I talked to somebody and they, usually in a big shop environment, it didn't sound like it was a big deal to have the fresh air, air intake. But with the offices in there, there might be an issue.
And we discussed it. We're going to spend, what was it, a hundred bucks to fix it?
Tracy's recommendation is that we have it. If we let it go with the contractor, Tracy's recommendation is, is that we go ahead and have it done and pay the extra to, to have it done.
Well, I guess I'm going to make a recommendation. You do it to all the buildings. You want to make an issue of it, we'll make an issue of it. Big painting, a street job down there at the school department. You understand, you, you lose efficiency, efficiency when you bring fresh air in from the outside. You bring cold air in instead of using warm air, but you, you do everyone. I don't care. You can have dripping from the bikes in the winter time. That's up to you guys.
I've got a motion in a second to approve the building heat system as, as installed. More discussion? The motion is to approve it as is. It would not be a job of contract to do it as we have specified. More discussion or questions?
I thought the heat efficiency was the bigger question.
There was a question, it was about, I think, eight thousand cubic feet of air or something. It's not huge.
Think about your new hangar at the airport. Yeah, I don't have one. You've got a whole side wall, put one in there.
We're not talking about the hangar right now. Have a motion in a second to approve the building as built. More discussion? Motion is to approve the building as built. We will not make the contractor make the change. Ready to vote? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Airport hangar and landings. I believe there's somebody here from the airport board to-
No, anybody got CCOs that year or?
Uh, we, we've got three different lease agreements that are floating around for the four hangars that are out there. The attorney has all of them and she did not bring back any recommendations, so I'm on that yet.
I guess what I had, mine was a kind of highlight to do.
That's not yet a copy.
We have got the back page. Second. Fourth paragraph up says, "It is understood that this lease may not be signed without the prior written consent of the leaseholder." This is C. "Which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld. The lease may, however, sublet the premises or any portion thereof with consent of the leaseholder. However, it is understood that such a person, such a sign, excuse me, such lease shall not release D.C. from primary responsibility unless we hear him after two years." I stopped in. This is signed by the city when Carl, the sheriff, ran off. And it's a thirty-year lease that expires in nineteen ninety-one and goes to nineteen twenty, nineteen, nineteen, twenty twenty-one would be the expiration on it. We're in thirteen. So twenty-one would be the expiration. This lease, as far as I can see, is paid up until twenty-one. And it says it shall not be unreasonably withheld. And I stopped in to get the same signatures, of course, to get the file with the mayor, the head officer. Or we just owe him maybe. And I still have the resolved. I just think that this lease should be transferable according to the contract. The city built the gun.
And I know my feeling has been that, again, I don't get to vote, but I can make recommendations. My feeling has been that instead of having a dollar a year lease for the land, it should be, I had proposed one percent of the assessed value. Because that way, the better the building is, the more it will come into the city. And if something's getting older, it's getting run out, it'll be less. A lot of the airports are using around nine to maybe fifteen cents a square foot a year in different places. And I had thought that the airport board was going to recommend a ten cents a square foot in the future for party contracts.
I did recommend ten cents. I had floated out the other day out there. I was there. Craig was too. To keep us in the ballpark, we're kind of dealing with a grandfather's thing here and it kind of already set a precedence, Mr. Merrily. Mr. Betterman actually bought a lease similar to this not very long ago. And I'm just looking at people missing tax to feel expires. And then we could probably deal with a situation like that. But then it is contracted, the city made it. I guess I feel it's been unreasonably withheld. Mike could give you more of the history on the deal because at one point the city engineer actually drew up a ten-space hangar out there. And the city wanted nothing to do with it. So this came about, the guys would build their own hangars. And actually, the ten-spotting hangar had five of them already rented and three- And actually, the ten-spot hangar had five of them already rented, and three of them probably were done or been. But it cost about seven thousand dollars, and I see Sherwood, Wyoming, just put up an eight-spot hangar. It was in last night's news, one point four million. But it cost the city seventy thousand to do this back then, and they could've been a lot more than that now. But these guys, well, four of them put up their own gal. Couple of them ran, they're working strong buildings, they got their own maintenance, and these buildings are still in good shape. They're better than the old city hangar is out there by quite a bit. We have repaired the old city hangar, it's still probably not in good shape, but they kept it in good condition last season.
Say one thing, the original deal was, when they tried to do the ten-old hangar, the city decided not to do it that time. So Ken Hill Cox and Odo Ross came to the council that time and explained to them what was going on. And so that's when these four leases, these original leases were signed. And then they allowed us to build these four buildings, my wife and I owned one, and then Doc Allwell has the other one. So those are the only two original hangers that are left now with this lease on. Of course, one of the gentleman, I think, the professor. But all we would like to do is, we're gonna be able to sell our hangar to John. So all we would like to do is have the blessing from the council to grandfather this end, to legally extend it to John.
Can you clarify something for me, I guess, I don't understand. I was told that some of these hangars with that dollar a year lease will revert back to the city.
Only, only, only way that would happen was if, if you would let it go into disrepair. And that's one thing that was part of the original, it's in here, it's in the original contract. And the only way that it would resort back is if you did not have your lease updated within sixty days of twenty-twenty-one. And up to that point, you can keep your, you can keep your hangar as long as you keep negotiating with the city every ten years after the original thirty.
Because we were at a meeting and one of those guys, they kind of, they were, they kept hinting at-
No, no.
That dollar a year lease, and I thought, well, the city couldn't lose that if we, if we get the property in the end, but-
Right. But no, at, at the original contract was, is if you kept it up and then you renegotiated every ten years, you know, prior to the ten-year period coming up, that you would keep it.
Thing stays in there, that it would be left in good condition, the ground is found in.
Those hangars are in good shape. I'd make a motion to have a grandfather add in till twenty-twenty-one.
Got a second now? Got a motion in the second to approve the lease transfer at the same dollar rate. Discussion?
What are the terms of this lease?
It's one dollar.
Uh, one dollar?
Dollar a year.
A year?
Twenty-twenty-one is our hangar.
That's not unusual, I have the same lease in Custer County Airport hangar, I own up there. That was what they were doing at the time, just wanted to get encouraged. The cities weren't putting up buildings, but there were pilots that had planes, and then transfers and stuff, it's much easier to have one of those. So Custer County did the same thing. Here's a spot piece of ground, release it for a dollar a year, you put up your building, you maintain it for sure. Your expense, because the city's not-
The original hangar that was to be built, we had five of us that told the city at that time that we would- My wife and I and Doc Allwell and his wife were two of them. And there was five folks told that we're gonna sign an agreement that we would have a long-term lease with the city if they would build this hangar. And then we felt there was like three or four, at least three other people that voiced interest from out of town. And at that time, they chose, you know, they did something, they'll do this, they chose not to. And that's when this lease came about, and they allowed us to build this hangar. That's where the original-
We paid the property tax.
We did. I, I paid the property tax, my wife and I do, we pay our own insurance and insurance.
Exactly, they put it in real estate.
And everything was built locally too, I mean, the contractor was locally, everything was done from UBC.
You're wanting to transfer the lease to the third.
And plus, they want to make this as, as to have authority for-
From the city of, uh-
And when we talked at that meeting, I think it was, any new structure that was built out there will be subject to the new rent agreement. This is, this can be the only one left that's-
One more.
There's one more.
One more, and then there's actually one from Custer, I got.
There's four total.
So it was four total regional plans? Yes.
Just guys, there's been other leases since then, like Harley mentioned about three types of leases. There were four leases, starting with Larry Betterman, there's two of them. He has one at Doc Allwell. And Larry Betterman, by the way, had set precedence because he did move that one.
And that was two to three years ago.
Yeah, right, so I think that kinda set precedence for this situation.
I think it's only fair that we-
And it's only four buildings involved with that particular lease, and we are trying, the grease has, you know, just evaluate it, assess the value of the building. But the F A A is trying to get everybody on the same page, so when they do grant money, if there's an airport that isn't doing square footies, that's what they're after instead of setting back. Then it comes up against the federal government when you apply for a grant. If you're not up kind of the community with your square footies, then you're probably not gonna get your grant.
I didn't realize that.
All right, I have a motion in the second to approve the lease.
In the future, Don, I think we should, all the council members should have a chance to read that lease before we're asked to vote.
Do you read that?
Well, I was reading.
I'd like to see a revert back, if we don't even know if we're voting.
I understand.
I'd like to see a revert back to the, to the city, but I-
Can we table this for two weeks?
I can understand where the city wouldn't put up the money to build these hangars, you guys done it yourselves, so I can kinda follow what the deal is here. I mean, the new hangars, I think, should be owned by the city personally.
I think too.
And that way, they're city property, and you're, and you guys' case, the city wouldn't do it, so I can understand.
And we did get approval on another building, by the way, for that glider, about fifty, what, year or something, a few months back. And the building we have now, I guess I would have to say Larry Betterman's pretty responsible. Fortunately, we had him on the South Dakota Commission of maybe, of maybe issue. Permission because he was the one that shotgunned that in there, right along with the tractor and the tractor shed. He kinda got things going in there, and then we got, built that part of the airport. But that big building we have out there, there were nine airplanes, I was in the back trying to get out the other day, and there's eight stacked ahead of me in that new building, we just put up. It's a pretty good income if the city owns it. And we got a second building, in fact, we're dealing now, I think the Glider Club is gonna come up with a letter of intent, which they would lease the new building, if we would build the one that we approved a while back. They're working on that now, we've worked out some other issues with traffic out there. We've kinda got the Glider Club out of the way now, so the seats airplane get in and out. That's makes it do well out there, just keep more aviation interest going, I don't wanna see it shriveling up here.
We have a client coming Friday night?
Yes, any of you people, if you have a chance, go out there. There'll probably be, I must say, between fifty and eighty, get airplanes.
And they have forty commitments for sure.
I think it's forty commitments right now, and it could grow by then. And they've added several years now, this is about the forty-fifth annual. About there anyway, you know, we have skydivers and Glider Club, and there's a lot of action on good weather weeks.
So I think with regard to this contract, we already set the precedent with Betterman. I think we should just go ahead with this, as it's, as the motion has been stated.
Got a motion in the second to approve the lease transfer, no changes? Any more discussion from the council?
It says in here, you got a right to renew this from twenty-twenty-one?
Yes.
And what, under what terms?
Ten years.
Under what terms for payment?
Same dollar a year.
I'm sure it's the same, but when that comes up, it's another, we can renegotiate, and that's where we could work this out. I don't know, we don't really spell that out.
We should do another motion, because we've lost one business about a year ago, because we couldn't decide what we wanted to charge for, for lease on a new, any new building going out there. So that whatever the amount is, and the airport advisory board recommended a ten cent per square foot based on the building size, for any new buildings going in out there that are privately built, and any renewals of the contract, which would mean in twenty-twenty-one, that new rate would go into effect if you decided to do that.
Shall we amend this motion, Matt?
No, it should be two separate, this is two separate issues. We've got a grandfather in issue, and we've got a issue going forward on any, any other leases in the future.
Saying future, or yes?
We are covered because we do, I got it on the schedule. I got a motion on the board to allow the lease transfer, no changes. Ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Now, do we wanna have another motion tonight on the, about the ten cent per square foot issue presented?
One second.
Got a motion that all new lease agreements or renewal agreements will be charged at ten cents a square foot? Any new buildings? Yep, new lease agreements.
That's if they're built themselves.
We have other lease, rental agreements for, you know, like the city buildings, the ones the city owns, gets paid monthly, or annually, or however, you know, have a couple of reasons for that, just a lease on the ground.
And all that. But that, that didn't specify whether it's a new hangar, or an old hangar, or a city hangar, or a private hangar?
New leases, new ground leases.
So that should cover-
Ground leases.
New ground leases.
Okay.
Got a motion in the second on the new rate of ten cents per square foot, already doing renewal leases in the future? Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Before we go to committee reports, I want to look back to the ordinance eleven thirty-five. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard now on this ordinance, about the recent? Scott, I have a, I'm paying a motion for the, for Doc to second reading of the ordinance eleven thirty-five.
So moved.
Got a motion in the second, discussion and questions? The ordinance, call the roll please.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yeah.
Wignia?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
unanimous, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Favorite points, that is a motion, Carl, do you have anything? And public works, right?
Uh, city wanted cleanup days will be held the week of September twenty-third through September twenty-seventh. And- No, no tires.
That was only four days.
Twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
We've been trying to work in the Saturday someplace, we talked about that once. And I've had a lot of complaints about fixing it.
It did come up when we talked about it this time.
Like this time, we did in the past, you know.
Maybe next one, we'll try to throw Saturday in.
I thought we only had four.
Six. And we got a report from Tracy on some of the jobs, and so I gotta give you a little rundown of some of the stuff the, the city crews have done this year that saved the taxpayers a lot of money. We did the Martin Street sewer extension. Dakota Street LA extension, the Almond Street sewer extension with a lot of handwork. We got the golf course water main that we're in the process of doing. We also repaired the asphalt from the ambulance place. And it looks, what Tracy had, he didn't have the asphalt in here, it's probably about two hundred thousand dollars worth of work that was done for around seventy-five thousand bucks due to the city crews. So we're saving some money, and the crews are doing a good job. Sometimes the city crews are a little slower, but everybody keep in mind, I got other things I gotta do too. That's all I got.
And we are saving tax money.
I have to say that Almond Street Sewer Line wasn't helping, they wanted to do that, they did a big job on that.
Thanks, Julie. Public safety, Greg?
Maybe next Monday at nine o'clock.
Not Tuesday.
Monday. On code?
And cultural recreation, did you have any of us?
We didn't have one, because last night would've been our actual meeting, we didn't have any.
I have a question about that, it was listed on the announcement that came from City Hall, the cultural rep is tonight at five-thirty.
Did you go?
Yeah. Me and two other people.
Well, we're glad somebody showed up.
No, and it's okay, it's just that, I've, I've often gone to move meetings, and several different committees can attest to that, when they got changed or canceled, and nobody knows, just a- I didn't know, I was sick a lot last week, unfortunately, so I didn't know, maybe there was some notice that I didn't care about, but if not, it's awesome, if there was.
I'm sorry that happened.
It's all right. So is there one that you know of or not?
We're still trying to figure out a time where we can make it work. No one showing up anyways, so.
I'm telling them when it shows up.
Okay, continuing. Harley, administrative planning and solvency report?
Uh, just two things, one, the South Dakota municipal league was mentioned. Any council members are welcome to go, and registration deadline is just around the corner. If anybody wishes to attend as a council person, it's your opportunity to, to see what happens on a statewide basis with the municipal league. Secondly, I just wanted to make mention, your board packet was a, a letter of reference to the building code effectiveness grading. It's part of what the I S O uses to determine your homeowner's insurance rates. And the better our rating as a city is with I S O, whether it's building code effectiveness, water, water mains testing, fire department, how efficient the fire department is, a lot of things goes into that rating. So if we can get a better rating, and about every ten years, they come through and, and do an evaluation on the city, it can affect the overall homeowner's insurance policies individually for businesses and residents. It was just information in your packets this time. Uh, the, the building code guy's gonna be here later in the month to review everything that Scott submitted.
Okay, anything else, Harley?
Okay.
I don't have anything at all, so I-
Wait, I have one last thing too. Whenever you do send that meeting up, the library shows the schedule as being five-thirty, but the notice, I get say five-fifteen. So just whichever one it is, so that everybody else will come act.
We know that you're fifteen minutes late, so that's why we tell you.
You don't have to make it from a knowledge.
Are we allowing, uh, city employees to go to Bill's funeral party? Friday morning? Also? Anybody that worked on the management, just follow everybody. Well, I have no other business for today, I almost far no other business.
I should know.
Got a motion in the second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.